City Council is called to order with all members present. Patricia Donaldson from Hope is Helping will do the invocation today. And we will be having the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Raymond Vergara. Everyone, please stand.
Okay, bow your heads, please. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we are very thankful that you've given us another day to live, that you have blessed our city of Hawthorne with numerous things. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our city, bless our mayor, our city council, our police department, our fire department, our residents and our businesses, Lord. And I'm very thankful, Lord, and I know you are, that Captain Catano is back. And we are very happy that he's better now and that he's gonna stay with the police department and make us go forward with Chief Ishii. So thank you, Lord, for everything that you have done and everything that you're gonna continue to do for us. In your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Councilmember Awad has a presentation on the agenda, Anti-Bullying Art Contest Winners. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if... If... Oh, sure. So we have the Hawthorne School District and the Family Justice Center conducted an anti-bullying art contest. And alongside that art contest, there were poetry entries. And the poem and the words that some of these students were presenting to both myself, Alex Montero, and Mike Talita really hit us. And we wanted to share that, those kind of words and contest winners today here with you guys here. If I think Nina, if you can, from the Family Justice Center, if you can come up and the Hawthorne School District?
Dr. Sonia Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Mayor Vargas and city council members. Sorry I'm a little late tonight, but here I have my friend, Dr. Sonia, from the school district. So I just want to say that I haven't been around for a long time, but I'll be back soon, giving, coming to the meetings regularly again. We have a family justice center here in Hawthorne, which is a domestic violence agency. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the future meetings. Every year, we try to do an outreach program to affect young people to learn about healthy relationships. This is our second year that we partner with the Hawthorne School District. And again, it's been very successful. And so I'm glad that tonight we have a chance to present to you what the kids have done.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, council members, members of the dais. It's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of some of the students of the Hawthorne School District. And as Ms. Maloney said, it is a fabulous partnership to raise awareness for bullying prevention. It's a sad reality that we face today, that many kids are being bullied and some of the sad consequences of suicide coming from that. And so I wanna bring up two of our students from the Hawthorne School District who are here tonight. They'll read their poems, and I'm gonna ask them to pinch-hit and read the first-place winner also from the 7th and 8th grade. So Melissa and Sarah.
Hi, my name is Melissa Garcia, and I go to Bud Carson Middle School in 6th grade.
Could you get closer to the mic a little bit? We wanna hear everything.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, wait, do you want me to repeat myself?
Yeah, go ahead, tell us who you are again, please.
My name is Melissa Garcia in the 6th grade, and I go to Bud Carson Middle School. And my poem is called "The Sad Truth." She says she's okay, but inside she's dying. Every time they bully her, she starts crying. The words help stop, and please, just make the sadness increase. Nobody helps her, nobody cares. All the time, they just do is stare. Her tears are dropping like raindrops from the sky. A few days later, we have to say goodbye, all because of you, of how you bullied her. Maybe next time, you'll remember of this, of the poem I made for you and the bulliness, the bulliness, what you make, what you do, of how you make people suffer, all because of you, you and your friends that make the bully crew, but also the people that never report it. Show them you care just a little bit, just do it. Just remember, kids, to never bully. The things that happen because of what you do really aren't a lie. People don't know how to handle it, so sometimes they die. Thank you.
Something to think about. Thank you for bringing awareness with your poem to the issue. We have another student, correct?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hashim, and I'm a sophomore at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. And I shall begin my poem. They looked from afar, wondering how it felt to smile. A child runs about, happiness dancing in his eyes, a smile radiating nonstop. They looked from afar, jealousy destabilizing the waters. They wanted that smile. A child runs about, confusion etched on his face. What did they want? They looked from afar, contemplating they would take away his smile. A child runs about, hurting physically, mentally. He still smiled. They looked from afar, anger, why was he still smiling? A child runs about, loneliness creeping towards him. Where had all his friends gone? They looked from afar, content, now he would not have a reason to smile. A child runs, fear coursing through his veins. They can destroy him, but not his smile. They stared from afar, resentment, why does he have that smile permanently on his face? A child runs, aimlessly, anywhere, tired. They stared from afar, watching the boy run, a dangerous smile on their lips. A child stops running, there was no need. He stops and looks. They start running, that can't be, can it? The smiling boy teetering over an edge? A child looks from afar, exhausted and done, he couldn't hold it. They started running, fear taking over, screaming as the boy slips from their grasp. A child with a smile, unmoving. They who pushed for a smile that was never theirs. Bullying can come in many different ways and for many different reasons. They may not be the obvious reasons everyone knows about. It can be a minuscule reason that slowly turns a person's life inside out. So instead of trying to forcefully do or take something from someone, instead of trying to make them follow you, be kind to them. Kindness goes a long way, helping people. Bullying goes a long way, ending people. Thank you.
So this poem is from Crystal Hale. She's a 7th grader from Bud Carson Middle School as well. Melissa will represent her.
Crystal's poem is called "No Bully Zone." Bullying kids know it's bad, bullying it makes them sad. My question to you is only just why? Just why do you make sad little kids die? You think it's a joke, you think it's all funny. I'll tell you right now what is to be done. Just be good, just be glad, no reason to hurt, not even attack. Stop bullying now, you know it's all wrong. You think you're so cool, you think you're, you are strong, but you're not for bullying. Thank you.
The poem I will be reading is by Carla Torres, 8th grade at Bud Carson Middle School. Words can hurt, don't know why, but all I know is they make me cry. Words can hurt, why do they bully me? I'm innocent, but do they see? Words can hurt, but will they see that their cruel words are hurting me? If only all the words would stop, I'd get so cross that I could pop.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Thank you, Elena, for the opportunity to be a part of this partnership. This is just one piece of our bullying prevention within the Hawthorne School District.
I just wanna say that we have the rest of the winners' photos, and we put in a slideshow. I will leave it here, I will give it to one of you if ever you wanna look at it, or if there's time tonight, I'm not sure, but it's here.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Actually, thank you very much, because this is the second time I heard these poems, right? And I was still having the goosebumps. Because, you know, when I was at the Hawthorne School District for eleven years, this is one of the things we tried to put, it was number-one priority, is it was to stop the bullying. And we know, you know, it's not there yet, but I hope the young people like you with this poem can teach the other kids how to be kind, how to be, you know, peacemakers instead of fighting, instead of bullying one another. Because like I shared with you guys the last time, that I grew up in a country in Europe that I was bullied. I spent my middle, you know, middle school, every day being pushed from one side to another, spit on my face. So even, you know, I feel emotion about that still today, you know, after almost, you know, forty years. So it's important for us to keep this message alive, that bullying is not, have no place in our society, especially in the school. So thank you very much, and I'm so proud, because you guys are very talented. So those poems are beautiful. And keep writing, okay? Because you can actually create some books about anti-bullying. So, you know, the creative, give you guys the talent and use it, because you're gonna be the agent that's, one day will stop bullying. Thank you very much.
To the chair. To the chair. Yeah, I was here the day that this young lady recited her award-winning poem. And I can tell you that there wasn't a dry eye in the house. It was very powerful. And he did a really good job, and it was deep, it was thoughtful, it was thought-provoking. And I remember we had a little conversation, because I came to this country myself from another country when I was nine years old. And I remember how difficult it was when you're different, when you're different, you know, when you don't speak the language and kids are testing you constantly. And it's a rough place to be, a playground sometimes, when you're ten, eleven, twelve years old. You know, it's a tough, tough place. So, you know, congratulations, keep fighting the good fight, keep fighting the good fight, because it really is, and if you don't talk about it, people don't think it happens. So you gotta just keep talking about it, keep making those beautiful poems. You'll probably be a writer one day, and I'll be buying your books. Keep it up, you got a lot of, both of you, you got a lot of talent. Congratulations, anyway.
As Mike mentioned too, that they're, hearing those poems the first day, really there was no dry eye in the room. It was surprising to us to see how real these students got, especially on this topic and for their age. I remember back in high school at Bishop Montgomery, my nickname used to be, oh, I don't wanna say that one, but I was 210, I was like five foot seven at the time. That's not the gym, so 210 has never hit the gym once. So then they gave me the nickname Buddha. So they would tackle me to the ground, like rub my belly, saying it was for good luck. Speaking of that story with those kids, it really did connect with everyone. It was nice to have all of us to kind of let the veil down, get real with one another, and really address the issue of what's happening, especially in the United States, where you have this opioid crisis skyrocketing, you have depression skyrocketing, and amongst the youngest children, too, they're already facing depression. And the fact that you're taking the Hawthorne School District and the Family Justice Center with, see, I'm already tearing up just like last time, to address this kind of issue, it's helpful. Like, I wish this was there when I was younger. It could have helped me out through some tougher times, and possibly not have some of the residual effects that happens as you're being bullied, as you're growing up. Again, I commend both of you for the way you've written those poems, the way you've addressed the issue and really took it to heart. And again, I commend Elena and Sonia for actually addressing this and pushing it through the school district. Again, wonderful job, you guys.
Get a picture? Yeah, let's take a picture. Do we have the camera? Yeah, we do, right? All right, let's go ahead. I think we all have had our little turn, you know, experiencing stuff like that when we were kids. And comes out of, those who are victimized others just comes from a feeling of insecurity on their part, so we gotta see how we can help those people, too.
Absolutely.
So Councilmember Valentine has a presentation on tonight's agenda. Go ahead.
So I'm going to ask Neil Gaffney to come to the podium. So this is bittersweet for us, because we're happy to honor you, because we believe you should be honored, but we're very sorry to see you leave our city. And so we have some, we have a proclamation for you, we have a gift for you, and I'm going to read the proclamation. We also have other proclamations from other agencies. Whereas the city of Hawthorne awards the veteran of the quarter recognition to Neil Gaffney for his community involvement and military achievements, and whereas he served with distinction as a Corps of Engineers officer from 1970 through 2002, retiring from the US Army as a full colonel. He served in a variety of leadership roles as a combat engineer during the Vietnam era, including staff and command positions. He was recognized with awards as a lieutenant and captain by helping the Army make the transition from the draft era to the all-volunteer Army. His awards included the Army Achievement Medal and Meritorious Service Medal, among others. And whereas he entered the Army Reserve in 1976, assigned to positions as a construction and facilities engineer, culminating as chief of staff of the Army Facilities Engineer Brigade. He was employed after 9/11 and served as a liaison officer for the Chief of Engineers in Washington, DC, retiring in May 2002. Upon his retirement, he was awarded one of the nation's highest medals, the Legion of Merit. And whereas he has been a resident of Hawthorne for eight years, he has distinguished himself as a community leader and civic supporter. He served for the past five years as an officer and president of the 360 South Bay Homeowners Association, and was founding chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission, helping distinguish Hawthorne's veteran commitment across all areas of the LA County veteran community. And whereas in April 2018, he relinquished his role as chair and commissioner to become the city's emergency manager. In that role, he has helped the city and community become better prepared by helping institute the Disaster Service Worker Program and the Alert South Bay Emergency Notification Program system. Now therefore, the Hawthorne City Council does formally join with the Veterans Affairs Commission. Family and friends, in celebration of his recognition and pay tribute to his years of dedication, achievements, community, civic, and military service in the city of Hawthorne, proclaim this 10th day of December 2019, signed by all of us, Mayor Alex Vargas, Councilmember Hadar Awad, Councilmember Alex Montero, Councilmember Mike Talita, and me, Mayor Protem Olivia J. Valentine. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't need the microphone, but what I will tell you is that what you have done...
Before you speak, we have more.
Oh, more?
There's more.
I will still say what you have done tonight makes my achievement pale in comparison. The Veterans Housing Initiative, which I've been a staunch supporter of, as has the commission, is incredible. And as I've committed to our city manager and to you, when that is dedicated, I will be back.
Thank you, thank you. We have more.
We have a message from our state senator, Steve Bradford. Okay, you get a nice little certificate, you can put like frame and everything. Presented to Council Colonel Neil Gaffney, veteran of the quarter. On behalf of the 35th California State Senate District, I proudly present this proclamation in appreciation of your outstanding services and dedication to our community and of our nation. We applaud your commitment to serving our country for 32-plus years as corps engineer in the US Army, founding chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission in the city of Hawthorne, and the many more organizations and lives you have touched. Best wishes in all of your future. It's been signed by Steve Bradford, our senator. Additionally, I have a message from Congresswoman Maxine Waters. Present, a certificate of special recognition presented to Colonel Neil Gaffney on the occasion of being honored as veteran of the quarter by the Hawthorne City Council and Veterans Affairs Commission. And in recognition of your impressive commitment to the residents of Hawthorne, serving as the founding chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission, and now the city's emergency manager, all after a distinguished career with the United States Army and Army Reserve, I wish you all the best in your continued service to others. It's been signed by Maxine Waters, our Congresswoman. Let's give it up to you again.
Thank you.
We have something else that's kind of special over here. She needs help picking it up. Who else wants to help? Everybody wants to hold on to it? Right, so.
I am touched.
Like that?
I love that. And as you know, I wouldn't be here if I didn't have the support of my wife. Behind every good man is a good woman. And the hours I dedicated to various activities, so she should be right up here with me, if she can get up. she can get up.
All right. So that's just one picture. Yeah, yeah. Who wants to take that too? Right. You can get parts names. You can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some.
So.
Come on in. We can't get parts names.
We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks? Veterans of the Quarter, turn around. So missing. I'm missing some. So. Come on in. We can't get parts names. We can get one. You are, man. 360 folks?
Veterans of the Quarter, turn around.[655.77]
I'm here. I, that came up because I had a problem trying to find a park. But I had a question for the council. I don't know whose business, whose things it is, but over in there, you know, I live on, by the 120th shopping plaza over there. And right there in front of the Target store, we had a big sign that two of them, one on the south side of the street and one on the north side of the street says, "No left turn, right turns only."
I know.
And that was a busy street. And about eighty percent of the people that shops that pay that don't done attention at all. Because I almost got hit there yesterday because it was a big SUV coming out and I was going in. And I thought they was gonna turn right, but when they saw I was gonna turn left, they pulled right out in front of me, so I had to brake to keep them from hitting them. And all I want to say is, you know, that is the one thing in life we have to do is assume when we're driving a car, that everybody's gonna do what they're supposed to do. So, and business, I live there, I know what all the signs say, then either we need to enforce that sign or take it down. So, I don't know which one, I don't know whose business it is, I'm just throwing it out there, you guys know all about this stuff. Yeah, that's y'all's job, that's why we vote for you guys, you know, so. But anyway, either have someone do something, enforce it or remove them. Because it's gonna, somebody gonna get hurt and right now all the traffic, especially during the holidays, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. City Attorney? Could you please look at that because it is a little confusing? Thank you, sir. Beverly Reese?
I was gonna introduce her, could I go first?
Oh, um. Is this from the Soul Food?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, just, it's all confusing here. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Raymond Vergara and Ms. Beverly Reese from Eminem Soul Food. Go ahead, Mr. Reese.
I'm gonna take my first three and then she takes her.
Yeah, go for it.
Just wanna make sure. Anyway, Raymond Vergara here, thirteen six five eight Hawthorne Boulevard. Homeowner, business owner, longtime resident of Hawthorne. Nineteen years. Just wanted to come out in a couple of things. One is, just kind of like a little liability issue. On one hundred and thirty-seventh street, that intersection, one hundred and thirty-seventh street in Hawthorne, we gotta do something about trimming those, those trees, because they really are causing like a lot of accidents. And it's kind of like when people are trying to make that left turn, going, going north on Hawthorne Boulevard, the, the trees are just impeding, impeding the, the, the blind spot. You can't, you can't see. Yeah. So, it's very dangerous. Just want to see if we could get our tree trimmers to go out there and, and some of our trees, you know, we, we did a, we did a million dollar facelift on our boulevard and our trees are covering some of our businesses. And you can't even see me California, where you can get good media, by the way, really excellent media. So, just if we could kind of look into that, get those trees trimmed. And then lastly, I just wanna, I wanna introduce this great restaurant. You know, I've always been complaining about, we don't have a lot, lot more restaurants, good homemade food restaurants. And I gotta tell you, when I walked into Eminem Soul Food, man, my mouth exploded because that food is delicious. It is prepared, on the spot, it is good. We actually came in earlier and sneaked in some, some cobble, cobble of pie for you guys. Hope if you had a chance, a lot, get some. Really good food. I just can't, can't talk, you know, a lot about it, but I want everybody to come out and support this great establishment. You know, we need more of these places where we can get some good nutritious food in our bodies. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, this is Beverly Reese.
Well, I'm not a talker. I don't talk much, I don't talk loud, but I am Beverly Reese. I am the proud owner of Ms. B's Eminem Soul Food Restaurant. I'm Ms. B. You guys, I'm looking forward to seeing all of you. My food is great. I'm very proud to be here in Hawthorne. I was in Inglewood for over twenty years, over twenty-five years, I believe it was. I was near the, near the Forum. And of course, you know, they went up on the rim and whatever, whatever, but I found this excellent location in Hawthorne, across the street from the seventy-sixth station. Used to be Charlie's Restaurant, okay? My food is great. I have many customers I already see in here that'll testify to that, okay? My hours, I'm closed on Mondays. If you come on a Monday, you'll be by yourself. I will not be there. That's not true, I will be there, but you can't eat because I won't be cooking, I'll be doing paperwork, okay? Now, we're open every day, Tuesday through Sunday, ten AM to nine PM. I have greens, yams, black eyed peas, oxtails, short ribs, pork chops, chicken. Good food, homemade food, cornbread to die for. As, as you see, I don't talk much, okay? Okay? Now, surprise for you. Those of you that have come tomorrow for lunch or dinner and say that you heard Ms. B. talk, and she will have a surprise for you. But you got to come tomorrow and you have to say that you heard me talk on December the tenth at this meeting. Now, you have to say all of that in order to get the surprise. If you don't say all of that, you're not gonna get the surprise, okay? All right? Now, I expect to see all of you there tomorrow packed, the restaurant packed, okay? We've been there like four weeks now, so we're brand new, okay? And a lot of people don't know, know that we're there, okay? So, I want you guys to pack this place up tomorrow. So, when I go back, I can tell my employees, this is what I did, okay? All right? Thank you so much and I'm proud to be here.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
To the chair. To the chair.
Hello, wait, don't go away yet, don't go away.
Ms. B. Hold on, guys.
Please, what is your exact address?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry. Forty-five, forty-nine, West Imperial Highway.
Corner with Freeman.
Corner of, of Ramona.
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 Ramona, Ramona.
And Imperial Highway. Tomorrow, same time, same place. I'll see you there.
I was looking for your place once before because I wanted some of that oxtail you were bragging about.
Oh, it's the best.
And I couldn't find it.
So, you got it now?
Well, I think so.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-nine.
West Imperial Highway.
All right.
I'm gonna look for you tomorrow.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Oh, and by the way, my son helps me run the place too, okay? I'm seventy-one years old. I know you don't believe that, but I am, okay? I am. And my son is fifty-one and everybody thinks that he is my husband. I'm a single woman and that is not my husband, okay?
Peter Yu, Peter Yu.
Good evening, councilman. We're old friends now, I've been here since July. I come down here to, to remind you, I have spent a lot of time writ, writing two proposals to you. I've come down to remind you, would you please read again and give me a response? Okay? Well, I think it's important, all right? This is the starting point. The final goal is make affordable housing for everybody in the city. But have a first state, steps. The first step is for the employee. Okay, that's a relatively smaller group. If we can show, we can do it, what we can do it for the city employee, then that including you guys, everybody, right? Then we can do for the whole city also, okay? I hope you guys spend a few minutes to read the two proposal, especially the second one. I call it Yukon Village, because there's a plot of land belongs to the city. You already got a land. What, what else do you need? You got a land, you can borrow mon, you can borrow the fund. If you have a problem to borrow, I'm gonna help you. Well, I don't mean I have money, the bank has money, okay? Well, you got a land, you, you can build and we, we have, we uniform everyone of you, of course, the whole, the whole city employee, whole city government. Now, we set example, we can do it. Then we do it for the whole city. Every worker in the town will enjoy housing for half price, for half the burden, that's the, that's the goal. Well, I will come to remind you, would you please read again, see if any value, okay? And I'm gonna hold the male responsible, male, what, do, do you owe me a response? If, if Democrats is still working in the city, I believe it's Democrats are working here, right? Right? See, I'm a citizen of Hawthorne, so I expect, I, I, I expect, I get a response. I have another news for you, okay? I regard myself as a beauty specialist, but they are, they are higher professional, people better than me, and I got a chance to see them. I already have engagement to the top constructing company in Asia. The company called Conterlando Constructing Company. You know how, how great the company is? This is the company made high-speed rail twenty years ago in Taiwan. Beautiful, beautiful, I, I, I.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Taiwan beginning often, every year, every other year I go. Every time I go, I ride high-speed train in Tai, Taiwan.
Excuse me, sir, your time is up.
Because it's smooth and comfortable, by the way, okay? Reasonable. And this company is the one made the high-speed rail in Taiwan.
Your three minutes are up, sir.
Well, by the way, we have problem to make high-speed rail here. You cannot ride here. If you wanna ride high-speed rail, go Taiwan.
Have a seat.
Okay, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Gordon Michael Migo, please. Thank you very much, we, we are reading your proposal, sir. And if something fees, seems feasible, we'll act on it and if, if not, we'll give you a response as well.
Hello, everyone. Name's Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. Before I get to my remarks, I was gonna, I was thinking about Neil Gaffney here, who I've known for a number of years, great guy, and, and saying that moving to Nashville, Tennessee and all that, and a kind of little, kind of amusing thought came to my mind. I thought, oh, he's going to Nashville to become a, a country music star.
I thought about that.
And maybe if you do, maybe you could put together a CD and he'll send it back to us and. Okay. That being said, a couple of things that have come up that, something will be carrying over into the next year and really my, my kind of headline topic is cost of living, quality of life. And there, there's an upcoming, on the March third primary ballot, is a parcel tax that is nominally for, you know, LA County Fire Department and all that. And, and this tax, which we've got like six cents per, per square foot, and they're talking about that it would generate about one point three million dollars, no, pardon me, a hundred and thirty-four million dollars of additional taxes every year. And this would be basically open-ended, a tax rate that could increase by up to two percent annually and remain on the books unless by a voter, you know, like an LA County Board of Supervisors request from the public to put it on the ballot to repeal it, it'll stay in effect like forever. So, what we're talking about is nominally, it could be like billions and billions of dollars taken out of the, you know, the pockets of the people. And what I would have to say is that, that, that is really, really way too much in, in the way of hitting the pocketbooks of the property owners, whether they're homeowners, commercial businesses and so forth, that it would definitely affect the sustainability of retail and other brick and mortar stores or businesses. It would also affect the affordability of owned or rented places. And as a thought, this definitely would not contribute to the affordability and also to homelessness. And should it really, you know, the LA County Board of Supervisors should provide the funds through the annual budget process. And as we all know, property taxes are inherently regressive in nature, more so than even sales taxes. So, that's something we should remember. And remember Hawthorne's.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Okay. Hawthorne's Measure HH was passed by our voters here to help in that regard. So, that being said, I wanna wish everyone a very merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, sir.
And a safe holidays and such.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Now's the time to form a line so we can see how deep that is. Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm Martin Trae, five oh one six, West one sixteen street, Los Angeles, nine oh oh four five. I live on a, a parking, a street that's got, you know, permit parking. I keep getting tickets, I have permits on my vehicles, they keep giving me tickets. I don't know what's wrong with these guys, they can't look at the vehicle. I caught one the other day, put one on my car and I said, what are you doing? He's like, you know, you don't have a thing. Right there, you see it, right there? Oh, okay, then he pulled the ticket off. This one I didn't see in time. He, you know, I keep getting them. It's gotta stop. I mean, why should I be getting tickets? I paid for a parking permit. It's on the vehicle. Also, when a guest comes over to my house, I have no place to park them. I put a note on the windshield, say this is a guest, it belongs to, you know, my address. Will you please, you know, permit them to park? They still get a ticket. So, you know, I have a social life, I can't, you know, there's no parking around the corner for me. So, something's gotta be done. I need a temporary permit for, for people to visit me and I need them to stop giving me tickets. It's on the car and I can't get nobody to look at it. They go to the police department. Will you look? No, we don't, you know, just send in a, you know, a note, you know, we're not gonna look.
You're gonna have our second-in-command from the police department, Captain Catano, look at this for you, okay?
Thank you.
He'll be right there in the back, so. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas and council members. My name's Lisa Agar at thirty-seven thirty-four, West El Segundo Boulevard. So, I wanted to take the time to thank Mr. Tayeda for the jolly experience I had at Wounded Heroes of America. I'm very pleased to be a resident where I see council members, a human-kind politicians, and, and I'm very excited to also be a participant with Olivia Valentine, who spearheaded the Business Expo that's coming up on January twenty-ninth at two-thirty in the afternoon at the Memorial Center. I wanna thank you guys for, you know, managing the city and a role model standard. I'm really proud to officially be a resident and being involved and also when I do crafts, arts and crafts with the North Hawthorne Association and get to play with the kids and the parents. So, thank you all for a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas and council members. I just wanted to take this time to invite the City of Hawthorne to the California Great Santa Stroll, which is taking place Saturday, December fourteenth. I have suits already available, I have a ten-pack dedicated here to council member award. What the California Great Santa Stroll is, is a challenge. We're entering a world challenge for the most Santas in one location and we're doing that in Hermosa Beach Pier this Saturday. Festivities begin at nine-thirty AM and the stroll begins at ten. All are welcome. We have adult-sized Santa suits that come with your registration, five pieces, beard included, and then even sizes for children as well. Canines will get a good doggy biscuit from our Mikey's Cafe, they are baking them fresh this week, forty-five dollar registration. I'll have more information cards on me and then I'll leave some for display outside. My name, oh, I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Anna Geraldi and I'm coming from Michael's Learning Place. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, council, mayor and council persons. I'm Carol Maston, I live at twenty-four, twenty-five, West one hundred and fifteenth street in Hawthorne, California. And I just have one concern. The news is that this evening, I saw on the CBS news where on your side, they had a report about a trash company picking up your recycle and your regular trash all in one sweep. And they were saying that, that, they're not, they're not supposed to do that. Well, I noticed that with my trash, that I put out my two cans, the recycle and the regular trash, and they pick, sometimes they pick up both of them. And I'm saying, well, what's the purpose? Don't we get a, some kind of incentive or something the city gets for our recycle? I'm not really sure. But I noticed it a couple of times that the recycle and the regular trash, the same truck just dumps them both. And I said, something's wrong with that picture. And I don't know where I started, who I start with, or where should I report this, but I did notice that and I think that something should be done or maybe somebody, there should be, maybe Oversight Committee, somebody to look into that. Because it doesn't make sense for us to have the blue and the brown trash can and they're picking both of them up at the same time. Thank you.
Mrs. Lopez, will you please give her a form that she could write out the details? Or I think Akbar? Is that you, Akbar, that can talk to her? Okay, Akbar will talk to you. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for reporting that.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, that's a little crazy.
Finally get my chance to be back up here and address the council. Again, Jerry Orleman and I live in Hawthorne, California. I take my hat off because I'm going to shamelessly plug Le Pain du Jour. I love their pastries, especially the almond croissants. If you go there, you can't miss on anything you order. Now, I'm putting my hat back on. I'm now standing here as the Southern District Director of Vietnam Veterans of America, California State Council. I'm very happy to be here where a fellow Vietnam veteran from South Bay Chapter Fifty-three has been honored tonight, Colonel Neil Gaffney. A lot of good things have been said about Neil. The Colonel has been very active in everything he does, he's very intelligent. I, I can't say enough about him, but there's one thing that's not listed in any of the proclamations that are, have been read tonight. And that's something that maybe a lot of people don't know about Colonel Gaffney, and that is, he will literally give you the shirt off his back and the shoes off his feet. I thank Colonel Gaffney for all he's done for the community and all he's done for homeless veterans and all he's done for Vietnam veterans. Thank you, Neil.
Any. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please form a line. If not, this will be the last person. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, city council, department heads, our wonderful, good neighbors, City of Hawthorne. Lethell Williams, a proud parent here in the City of Hawthorne. 'Tis the season and we're jolly. Happy holiday to everyone. It's definitely time for holiday cheer. And I would like to say to Mr. Alex Montero, sir, you make a difference, you make a true difference. The tillage for Thanksgiving did not go empty whatsoever due to your due diligence, met some parents and say, hey, do you know, even after the holiday, we still had a wonderful tillage? That is very important here in our wonderful community. As we know, this is the time for the, I'm a member of the Oversight Committee for Measure M. and we have a meeting December sixteenth, and I'm also a member of the Advisory Board here for our Housing Department. Housing is very serious. And you know, our last meeting, the phones start lighting up because we had three wonderful amigos. And I say, you were wonderful amigos for being here, ready to vote on an issue, but you needed that one last vote. And it's okay, because God, you have to still always pray, no matter what your situation is, God will not leave you without a roof over your head if you keep looking and holding your head up. Because as you know, our nation is into the third impeachment. It's important for a lot of us, it's important for a lot of us. So, as we go into voting season, if you see somebody named that wasn't here for you on that tally, remember that person is always gonna be absent and not gonna be there for them. So, maybe you may not think to really vote for them or have a different view on voting for him because those three amigos was very important for being here and to Mr. Veteran. He left, but my daughter, Precious Simpson, would love to thank him for giving that college interview for her achievement. And now she's attending college. So, Mr. Gaffney, you are a true hero. Thank you for my time.
Anyone else? Okay, oral communication is close ordered. Mr. Clerk.
Sorry about that, hold on. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have six items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item eight, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting of November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Item nine, approval of waiver, waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item ten, city treasurers request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eighty-one fifty-four, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Dodie Avenue and one hundred and fifteenth street. Item thirteen, resolution number eight-one-five-five, resolution number eight-one-five-five, authorizing the destruction of police department internal affairs files from January first, twenty fourteen to December thirtieth, twenty fourteen pursuant to resolution number seven-one-seven-zero. Item number fourteen, resolution number eighty-one fifty-six, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the execution of a loan agreement by and between the successor agency and the City of Hawthorne pursuant to California Health and Safety Code, section three-four-one-seven-three, for the payment and enforceable obligations of the former redevelopment agency and taking certain relating actions for adoption.
To the chair before you make a motion. I have a correction on the minutes of November twelfth. Under my councilman report, I thank Rebecca Sanchez and Patty, but on the minute, it's a Patty Diaz, but it's Patricia Estrada. All right, thank you.
We'll make the update, thank you.
I move.
Second, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, next item, please.
Urgency ordinance number twenty-one ninety-four. Ordinance number twenty-one ninety-four and urgency ordinance adding chapter nine-point-seven-one, temporary prohibition and no-fault evictions to Division V-one, Consumer Protection of Title Nine, Public Peace Morals and Welfare of the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding a temporary prohibition on no-fault evictions through December thirty-first, twenty nineteen for residential real property built prior to January first, two thousand and five, for adoption.
Okay, so, wanted to introduce this ordinance. A couple of meetings ago, there was one of the speakers who had come up to the city council podium and talked about a couple of these landlords possibly taking advantage of, you know, the hiking the rents and trying to have some of their tenants end up evicting themselves, right, because they can't afford it. So, it's been problematic in our city and in many other cities, which is why the governor for January the first, he's going to have his statewide type of eviction control and rent control that he's doing on a statewide level. So, that's something that's in place. But what I thought a couple of meetings ago, since I had heard this, that story and previous members of our community who have called and complained about the drastically increasing rents by landlords who are taking advantage of the situation, I decided a couple of meetings ago to have this come back as a memo, as a clarification, as a memo at the last meeting. So, I mean, it was I that was offered that to have been put on the agenda. And my intent was to have the city council discuss this first, to give any ideas on how we could modify the urgency ordinance. And I gave the city attorney some ideas on how he could modify it to improve it, to make it most effective, which is important, right? If it's not gonna be effective and if you can't really do anything with it, then why even have it in the first place? So my understanding is that the city attorney prepared an urgency ordinance, which could, which is going to be voted on today. I told the city attorney that I was going to be on vacation and I would miss that meeting. And unfortunately, at the last meeting, it was implied that I missed the meeting on purpose to, for whatever ulterior reason. I mean, and the insinuation was made that like, I wasn't for this. I mean, I'm the one that came up with the idea in the first place. So it just kind of defies logic. I don't want to argue with any of my colleagues today that made any statements at the last meeting. I think that everybody, most people, some people might not agree with the ordinance. You can vote your conscience or how you like. I'm going to support this, and I hope that the people who originally were going to vote for this could go ahead and just do that. So I make the motion.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Okay. The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
So this will be in effect, if it would have been voted at last meeting or the previous meeting, there's only a few weeks left for it to take an effect.
Effective immediately.
It's effective immediately. So if we catch anybody that's doing anything that's improper and hurting our residents, that are tenants here in the city, I will take action. Okay. So Madam, Acting City Manager, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have item eighteen for your approval.
I make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have just one, item number twenty.
I make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council Members voting yes.
Is Mr. Brian De Souza here? Souza, please come up. Okay, sir, you're going to be appointed, well, depending on how the City Council votes. I mean, I don't know, but now you'll be appointed to the Youth Commission. So can I make the, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Brian De Souza to the Youth Commission.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council Members voting yes.
I'm going to do the oath of swearing you in. And then after that, we'd like to hear some brief comments about what you plan on doing.
I, Brian De Souza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and real.
Allegiance?
Allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or a purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties that I'm upon?
That I'm about to enter?
That I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brian De Souza. I am currently a junior at Hawthorne High School. I signed up for this program to work with the Youth Commission. My teacher actually, for avid, recommended me this because she thought I could make a difference as like, I don't know. Because like, she thinks that I'm a person that like, likes to challenge myself, and I actually do. And she thinks I have good leadership like skills. So she told me to sign up for this for this Youth Commission. So I was like, why not? And challenge myself and like, so far from what I've like seen and hearing, like, I'm actually interested and like, I'm glad I'm partaking in this, like, not really program, but like Youth Commission. And I hope I can make a difference in the city and like, that my like opinion will be heard. And yeah.
To the chair.
Thank you so much.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Yeah, you got some people want to talk to you.
Hi, is that Ms. Nunez?
Yeah, Ms. Nunez.
I know, she's a pushing, right? Okay, say Alex Montero, say hi.
Oh, yeah, she told, she actually brought you up. She was like, if you need like someone to talk to, just talk to Alex and be like, oh, Nunez sent me to you.
Yeah, we go all the way, yeah. Okay, we need relay for life for many, many years together, yeah. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. City Treasurer, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick things. Happy to see more businesses in the City of Hawthorne, restaurants especially. Been enjoying, always enjoy all the restaurants in the city. Want to thank the community for coming out and making your voices heard and participating in the process. Definitely appreciated the anti-bullying contest winners and even those that entered. Those poems were were good and quite, quite deep and quite serious. And I definitely appreciate those and the contribution from just the youth in our community. We, I helped support a nonprofit organization called Shoes For Our Youth a couple of weeks back, I think it was Saturday after Thanksgiving. And I want to thank everybody from the community that came out and supported the shoe drive that Saturday and donated some used shoes, some even donated some new shoes. We had Commissioner Barboa came out. We had Mayor Pro Tim Valentine came out. And just a lot of people from the community came out. And so I know that nonprofit really appreciated. They have a collection being outside. If anybody has any spare shoes or shoes they want to donate to the youth, I know the nonprofit is going to partner up with Councilman Alex Montero later on this month to help to distribute some of the shoes they've collected to the community. So we definitely appreciate all the support. And I'm glad to see that we were able to pass this emergency housing ordinance. Just from perspective, I've had a lot of people from the community reach out to me having, being faced with, being asked to move out of their apartment before the year is out. And, you know, it's kind of hard to hear that that's happening right around Christmas. And so hopefully, this is passing time to be able to support some of our residents and allow them to stay at their home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk?
All right, I'll keep it short. Thank you, everyone who's here tonight and watching at home. I just have a few updates. So the City Clerk's office is co-hosting a Voting Solutions for All People Town Hall with Delta Sigma Theta sorority on January eleventh. The goal will be to receive the community's feedback on the new voting procedures for the upcoming elections. We'll be sending, we'll be posting information about the Town Hall on Nextdoor, the city's website, and also on Instagram. This is a reminder to join Nextdoor. We've hit the nine thousand member mark this month. So if you have friends, neighbors who are not on Nextdoor, the Nextdoor phone application, please have them join because it's just a, you get a wealth of information via Nextdoor. It's pretty amazing. We started with about, I think it was about six, five to six thousand people on Nextdoor about a year ago when we were elected, and we're up to nine thousand people. So it's a great way to share information to our community. This is a reminder to our directors and council members, if you have an event or resource that you want to share with our community, please send the flyer to our social media intern Sarah. Remember, when you send us information to post, you're sending it out to an audience of nine thousand Hawthorne residents. So again, thank you again for being here tonight, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Harawat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to first off congratulate Neil Gaffney for being the veteran of the quarter. I want to congratulate Century Housing for winning the RFP proposal. For the Great Santa Walk, there's ten Santa suits I have in the back. So if anyone within the city or even the police department want to partake in the Saturday Great Santa Walk, contact me, and then I'll give you a Santa suit with the beard, and we'll all go take that walk down to Hermosa Beach. What else was there? Oh, I think during Thanksgiving, we had our turkey giveaway with Earth Cafe, and we gave out, what's nice about Earth Cafe is they gave out not just a slice of pumpkin pie, but they gave an actual whole pumpkin pie to go along with every turkey that we gave out to all the families within Hawthorne. It was a very touching moment to have all of us come together. It was nice to have the council members there in PD just to partake in helping out all these low-income families. I think with that, that is done. Oh, last thing, so not to beat around the bush. So I did make that comment at the last council meeting. And just to address why, the thing that took me off was it shows the city's hand. So basically, when you throw it in there and make an urge to your ordinance and not push it through, well, then it gives the private sector those additional three weeks to really start shoving out those letters, which then, which is exactly what I saw after that council meeting. You started to see the amount of evictions skyrocket even further because they know the city was going to extend the deadline. That was the only reason that it caught us off guard. I remember Montero was also on the dais and confused that we needed four votes. But that was the main reason for it, is I didn't want to show the city's hand so quickly and then putting the residents in jeopardy. Besides that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mr. City Attorney, can you take a look to see if we could look that retro? And if Councilmember Harawat has any of those letters on some of those evictions that took place since then? Let's see if we can go ahead and prosecute those people, okay? Councilmember Tayeda?
Well, okay, I was one of the two amigos that was not here. And, you know, immediately, the election apparently is on because the very next day, my seven hundred file was put on social media by David. So I guess that's my opponent in the election saying that I'm a real estate broker, and therefore, I don't care about the people in Hawthorne, which is, you know, nothing could be farther from the truth, that I make a hundred thousand dollars a year selling real estate, which is a bit of a plug. So if anybody needs any business, I'm a good real estate agent. You know, I guess that's part for, you know, there was also a pretty inspiring leadership moment there that I couldn't make that meeting because I'm the president and founder of a nonprofit that was having their last meeting of the year that night, and it was scheduled six months before. So it's the, it's a meeting where we, where all the money comes in to run the foundation for the next year. So I couldn't miss that meeting. So that's the reason why I wasn't here that night. It had nothing to do with some nefarious trying to support the real estate industry evicting helpless people in December. That was not part of the deal. It had to do a little bit with leadership. And because leadership, one of the main factors in leadership is good judgment. When you use it, when you don't use it, when to do it, when not to do it, when to pick a fight, when not to pick a fight. So, you know, that's my reason why I wasn't at that meeting that evening is because I was running another meeting that was very important to a great deal of veterans that are depending on me to help them in their tough times. So that was very inspirational and somewhat motivational. So that's my, that's why I couldn't make that meeting here that night. I look forward to helping anybody that's being evicted. I have absolutely no dog in that fight. I'm not a big fan of rent control, but that means that trains left the station already, and that's what's going to happen. And in the end, I think what's going to happen is people that never got their rent raised are going to get a rent raise every year. So, you know, they're going to have to work that out. But I have no, I think that that's the right thing to do. I'm sorry that I wasn't here. I didn't expect to get that much flack for that because I thought that somebody was going to vote that in. I just couldn't be here that night. And I'm not apologizing, I'm explaining. I'm just telling what that deal was. So as far as that impassioned speech about leadership, you know, maybe we can have a workshop later on, and you can share with us some of your leadership abilities. But I don't blame you. You know, everybody was pretty hot about that. But that's, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Mike, I didn't post your seven hundred. That was posted by, by the person who wrote the article.
It was there, and it said, and actually, I was just checking the boxes, you know, ten thousand to a hundred thousand, you know, but.
The author of the article posted that.
Listen, listen, if I get any business out of that, I'll throw you a bone. I'll give you a referral fee.
I don't run any publications. I didn't post that.
Okay, well, the most important part that we have to know is that everybody on this dais voted for it. So everybody's in support of it. So today was proof. So any detractors can just look at today's vote for everybody on here, so.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, does he have anything else?
Huh?
Esteban?
Neil, wherever he's at, he's a great guy. He's a real, real, we're going to miss that guy because he's a real sharp guy, and he created and led that Veteran Commission. And I'm really happy. I hope this thing with the with the Cordary Project, the reason why I thought that that'd be a good deal to keep it at that amount of units and not make it complicated is so then you could go to another city once it's done because there's a lot of cities that have small lots somewhere, and you keep it small, keep it simple, and it's duplicate, it's easy to duplicate. And then you're really doing something for veteran housing. Then you're really going to accomplish something if you can get and not make it, not make it very complicated. So I'm really excited about that. And I want to help in any way that I can. I know the players. I know some of these letters. Some of the people that wrote these letters are good people. Yeah, yeah, they're all good people.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm done.
Councilmember, thank you, sir. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since my name was brought into the conversation about that ordinance, the motorium, so let just me clarify, because this is what I think the message was misunderstood. We were shocked was because we didn't know that for an emergency ordinance, we needed four vote. You see that we all, the three amigos, I was shocked because I didn't know that. So I thought that three vote was going to pass it. But until our city attorney told us now, an emergency ordinance needs to have four votes. So that is, that is the key. That is what was supposed to happen. It's not because leadership, it's not because of this and that and that. It's because we didn't know that we needed four vote. So now we have an education. We learned something. So thank you, Russell. Thank you, everybody, for participating. And it's a great evening that we passed that. So we move on, and we're going to protect those renters out there. Well, let me just start it at, again, you know, Neil Gaffney was an outstanding gentleman, you know. So, you know, these past eighty years, even I believe it or not, that it's sad to see him going because I thought maybe one day he was going to be sitting on this dais because that's how intelligent that Colonel is. So we're going to miss him. And he gave us a lot of good eighty years, you know, on the commission and on emergency preparedness. So he gave us a lot of good information because last month I attend one of the workshops that was required about emergency preparedness. So he did a tremendous job. So thank you for that. I want to also thank you, the staff, especially the public works, to put this, the Resolution Eighty-One Fifty-Four, the four-way stop on One Fifteen and Dodie because one of the North Hawthorne Neighborhood Association complained. So I went there and assessed the situation, and I saw those cars flying into that intersection. So thank you for bringing this so soon because I just give a director two weeks ago, and he's here today. So thank you for that. I appreciate the expedition of the process. Also, I want to acknowledge, you know, the police department, Captain Ishi, and then we had Captain, oh, no, Captain Ishi, Chief Ishi, and Captain Keitano. Thank you for coming here tonight. I know you guys have had a busy week, you know, these past two weeks. So thank you for your. So thank you for your outstanding leadership and detective work. So thank you to keep that. And I just have to say my condolence, you know, sympathy today, one of the police officers was killed in New Jersey this afternoon. And then those three Navy guys in Florida, so we still have violence in our cities that guns, 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 guns. So we so sorry to see these young men of the police and the military still be killing in, right here in our country. It's not even like in Afghanistan or Iraq, but right here in our United States of America. So it's, my hat goes to all of you in the service, especially the police officers that put their lives, you know, at risk every second for us. So thank you very much for that. And also, I wanted to remind everybody, tomorrow morning at 8:00 at the Hope Chapel in Hawthorne, at 13560 South Hawthorne Boulevard, there's going to be a meeting with the Hawthorne Land Management Association. And I'm bringing a guest from the LA County Board of Supervisor to go talk to the churches, the pastors and the ministers, how to access money to help the homeless. Because, you know, LA County have all that money there from the measure that we passed. And we need to reach out to LA County and say Hawthorne needs some of that dollar. So they're going to tell the pastors how they can apply for some of that money tomorrow morning at 8:00. So he'll be there, Stephen Yu will be there. So if you want to learn, just come, come on and you'll have free breakfast. So 8:00 tomorrow morning at the Hope Chapel in Hawthorne. I want to remind everybody in the city of Hawthorne, that when I got elected, the first thing I did was a town hall meeting with all the property owners and tell about this new contract that we renegotiate with the Republic Service about the bulk items, all the trash. We have, you know, I've been diving around because, you know, I live here, I work here, I go to different places. But it has improved a little bit, but people still putting the bulk item on the sidewalk and leave them there for days. There is no reason for that. Because now, each address in Hawthorne has 20 item-free pickups a year, 20. Before, you only had three a year. So now you have 20. So there's no reason to put those bulk items on the sidewalks. Because, look, Hawthorne is coming a long way. Look at the boulevards, looking beautiful. Hawthorne, El Segundo, Prairie is going to come, you know, eventually. Crenshaw, we have another project coming soon. So we want to make this city one of the destination, like Ms. Valentine always says, of South Bay. We basically, you know, we had the gate open for the South Bay of the beach cities. So we need to make sure that our residents and us here is working for you, but you need to help us. So don't put your trash on the sidewalk, because, you know, you have childrens. Your own kids are going to have to go through those sidewalks to go to school or to go do some shopping. So you have 20 item-free pickup, please take advantage of that. You just call that 1-800 number on Republic and schedule pickup, okay? So please do that for all of us and we appreciate that. The other thing that I want to mention is that on the 17th, at 3:30 at the Polaris Room at the Memorial Center, we're going to have the first meeting for the Complete Count Committee for the Census 2020. So this afternoon, Maya Sitt and I, we sent about 100 emails out to all organizations, churches, schools, business, neighborhood associations, because we want everybody to be part of that Complete Count Committee. Because we need to count all residents of Hawthorne. Like I said, 2020, we did a lot of outreach and only 56% of the people were counted for the city of Hawthorne. 56% of the close to 90,000 people we had. So that means is that federal dollars, school money, lunch money, all be affected if we do not have 100% count. It's a dollar, because that's what the federal government divides the money, you know, to the, to each congressional district. It's by those census numbers. The CGVG money, the HUD money, the home fund money, special ed money for the schools. So all of that is very important, so we need to count everybody. So the first meeting is going to be, like I said, December 17th at 3:30 at the Polaris Room. Please be there, even if you are just a resident, just go there and learn and you tell your neighbors. I reach out to your neighbors. So that's very important. On the 18th, I know the city staff is having their own lunch, Christmas lunch at 12. But the annual Monita Gardens and the South Bay, you know, the castle, we have usually, we've been doing this for 25 years, it's the Christmas padlock for the annual Christmas party for Monita Gardens. And if you bring a toy, even the fly said, "Padlock, but I ask you not to cook, because I'm cooking." Okay? So just bring dessert or something to drink, because I'm going to be cooking some Portuguese food and some West African food. So come enjoy. At noon time, at the Hawthorne School District Boardroom, 14120 South Hawthorne Boulevard, 14120 South Hawthorne Boulevard. Okay? So some of you, come and try my food and maybe we can do some business. And I'm almost there, Mr. Mayor.
Alex, you got 25 seconds.
Ah, okay, I knew you were going to tell me that. So again, I just want to say that the Hawthorne President's Council, Monita Gardens, we're giving our toys and food baskets and gift cards and the shoes that Ms. David mentioned. On the 20th, it's Friday, December 20th, starting from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the South Campus, that is 14013 Yukon Avenue, 14013 Yukon Avenue. Just be there from between 10:00 and 3:00, we'll be there. And remember that all the families come from the Hawthorne School District needy families. So, and I believe it or not, I already have on at least 400 childrens. But all of them are guaranteed Target gift cards, so for the, for the goodbye toys. And happy, happy, happy New Year coming up so soon. Merry Christmas, Hanukkah, all of those beautiful celebrations of diversity in the world. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So this has been a remarkable year in the growth spurt of our city. So I want to take this opportunity to thank city staff. I want to thank Public Works, Planning, Finance, Business License, Building and Safety, Police Department, for working with the businesses to help them open their doors and respond in a timely manner to their questions and to help them when they had difficulties. I am so proud that in the last two months, I have attended the grand opening of several new businesses in Hawthorne, Earth Cafe, Burlington, Navy Federal Credit Union. And Thursday, we will welcome yet another new business, Medici Restaurant, right across the street at the Marriott Hotel. I remember, in November, I reported that Hawthorne has seen remarkable job growth in recent years, higher than the South Bay and the whole of LA County. Hawthorne is also seen as an active place for startup aerospace companies, keeping aerospace alive in the South Bay. We are in a growth spurt and I want us to keep it that way. Thanks to all of you who helped make this a wonderful city, and that's to our staff and our residents. And in line with that, I want to say save the date, January 29th, 2020. Lisa Aguilar spoke of it earlier, year number five of the Hawthorne Business Expo. You're going to find flyers outside. We have our flyers printed. Our theme this year is Building Connections and Strategies for Success. This is Hawthorne Business Expo 2020. We will have breakout sessions for businesses so that they can improve the quality of their business. Some of the breakout sessions are Supercharge Your Social Media, Computer Security and Cyberliability, Website Essentials for Small Businesses, No Cost Resources for Entrepreneurs, and Financing Your Business. Now, these are workshops given by experts. These are not workshops just given by the man on the street. These are workshops given by experts who will, who will give you a really good, a really good training for those who want to go to those workshops and learn how to improve their businesses. We also will have, well, we, we want to have the announcement for Business of the Year, but the flyer says, "Vote for Business of the Year." If you go to HawthornBusinessExpo.com/vote, you get, you get an opportunity to vote for the Business of the Year in Hawthorne that based on what you, based on criteria that you think makes something a really good business. So we hope that we'll have a lot of people voting this year and we, we plan to give out a prize for the winner at the Business Expo. That's January 29th, 2:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. It is free to the public and there's still time for you to exhibit if you'd like. So far, we've got 50 exhibitors. So please make sure you put that on your calendar. So I, I want to say thank you to a few people tonight, the Anti-Bullying Art Contest, Elena from the New Star Family Justice Center, who, by the way, I'd like to see her come back. She said she would come back and talk to us about what her, what her center does. They do important work to, to, to give advice to people who are suffering domestic abuse. That's a very important part of what they do. And the Anti-Bullying Art Contest was right in line with that, with their, with their, with their mission. I want to thank Neil Gaffney for his leadership in the city of Hawthorne. He's been a leader wherever he's gone, as you could tell from the, from the proclamations and the, and the awards we gave. Wherever he goes, he takes a leadership role and we will, he's got big shoes that we, we are going to have trouble filling. His, the Veterans Affairs Commission basically was stood up under his leadership and I'm very proud of that commission. But he was the first leader and he really, he really got it going as a, as a really, as an important part of the community. The Cordery Project is important. I want to, I'm happy that Brian DeAndrea of Century Housing got the, got the bid. This is an excellent, an excellent nonprofit housing development company and they're well-known in their service to the veteran community. Let's see if there's, see. Oh, the parcel tax. I have mixed feelings about the parcel tax. What I would like to ask our city attorney, could we have someone come in at, in our January meeting and have, maybe have two people, one pro and one con, to discuss, to give the residents an idea of what the parcel tax will mean to them and the impact? So I'd like to do that, please. Let's have, let's have some, let's have a discussion about the parcel tax, which will impact all of us. And I think we ought to know as much, as much about it as possible. And other than saying to you Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy, Happy New Year. Have a wonderful rest of your year and that's all I have.
Okay. Sorry, guys, I forgot something. Ms. Love, okay, see, Ms. Love's still not doing well. I talked to her this afternoon. So she's at home, but she's still having problems breathing, so she got one of those portable oxygen. So especially for the folks on Holly Park, you know, keep eye on Ms. Love over there, because she's the mother of all of us, okay? So keep with that. I just want to mention that the Parks and Rec is having the Winter Waterland Spectacular. So it's a big event, so make sure that you put on your calendar, December 21st, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Memorial Park. So bring your childrens, your families, you'll have a lot of fun. The Winter Waterland Spectacular. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I want to commend the school district and members of this council who were judges for the Anti-Bullying Poetry Contest. Does bring some great awareness to a problem that we've been having, that has reached big proportions, enough for us to say that we need to do something. So I'm glad that that took place and that I'm happy to see that my, our council members' colleagues were able to be part of that. I'm glad that everybody took a great leadership up here on the city council in voting for the unlawful eviction emergency ordinance. We hope we're able to protect some of those who are threatened by it. And again, Mr. City Attorney, if you could take a look to see if we can do any retroaction on any of those people who, since the last meeting, were victimized by any of these landlords. I want to thank Mr. Peter Yu for coming up and giving some of his suggestions. I know it's the third time. But, Mr. City Attorney, could you please give a response to Mr. Peter Yu? Just let him know that we acknowledge that we have received his information and his suggestions and we're taking a look at it and explain to, let him know, you know, what the next steps are that we could take, okay? And I have to agree with Councilmember Hadarwad on the pumpkin pies that Earth Cafe makes. They're delicious. I love Costco pumpkin pie. I love it. You know, and right at Thanksgiving, you just go get the thing, you don't have to bake it and it's really good. But this stuff over here is like even better at Earth Cafe. I'm like, oh, man, this is good stuff. I mean, I could eat Earth Cafe and Costco together, just give me both, I don't care. But yeah, it's delicious stuff, so I have to, and congratulations on your event that you did, your turkey giveaway also, so that was great to hear. Looking forward to Mayor Protem's Business Expo. And so, one of the, one of the great things that we, that we can look back on is that with this dynamic that we have up here has worked wonderfully to bring awesome new businesses to the city of Hawthorne. About four years ago, we can, four years ago, we can look and we can see that there was a big problem with vacancies along Hawthorne Boulevard. Whether we can blame predecessors or whatever, blah, 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 et cetera. I don't care about that, it happened before us, right? But what we did after that, filling up all those vacancies along Hawthorne Boulevard with good quality businesses and making sure that we increased the people coming through the city and making Hawthorne a destination city, increasing our sales tax base, growing the El Segundo Corridor from Prairie up to Crenshaw with Common Space Brewery, Los Elie Works, and a couple of other businesses that are set to open up there in that little area as well. The growth of Tesla, the growth here in the city of Hawthorne, the Boring Company, and of course SpaceX. And all the supporting vendors that you don't hear about that don't necessarily come up here and have a ribbon cutting, all the supporting vendors that do the machining of all the parts for Tesla and SpaceX and a lot of the other local aerospace companies are based in that area. So, it's a lot to celebrate. So, and that wouldn't be done without the leadership of every single one of us up here. Okay? So kudos to all my council colleagues and thank you all for being here. Have a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and a Happy New Year.